...new business E, discussion by council voter on their action on removal of charitable donation bins from private property to town's request without notice of the property. Can you move that up on the agenda? Don't worry, we're gonna... Where is that on the agenda?
Old Business A.
I'd like to make a motion to first move up 12A under old business discussion by council voter on their action on removal of charitable donation bins from private property to town's request without notice of the property.
Chair seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing that, Madam Clerk, vote please.
Ms. Sow, yes.
Yes.
You know, can you indulge me, there's a lot of my ear, I didn't hear the motion, I am so sorry.
Moving up, but...
Old Business A.
Old Business A, and then new business E.
Discussion voter on their action solar power and then going into new business E.
Discussion by council voter on their action on removal of charitable donation bins.
Sure, I'm amenable to either one coming up, both actually.
Yeah, we're going K18.
Thank you. Yes.
Yes. Okay, Mr. Epps.
Mr. President, members of the council, it's Frank Epps, I'm managing director and principal of Energy Development Partners. Our office is located at 51 Dusco Drive here in North Smithfield. I'm here again this evening to ask for your approval for the execution of the power purchase agreement that was sent to your council, your solicitor, within the past couple of weeks now, so I believe from our last meeting that the council asked me for their time to be able to review all of the aspects of the power purchase agreement. And I do apologize for my voice, I've been very ill for the past couple of days.
Mr. Solicitor, is everything in order?
Yes, Mr. President, you know this agreement with negotiated changes were made, reviewed by myself, and also the outside consultant, which we got to consistency with other and similar power purchase agreements. The changes that we could make were made in the document, and I think should include as we're going to, some more successful document we can negotiate. The terms, your council is well familiar with, the council themselves negotiated the terms.
Town administrator, I think first is here.
And you know, Mr. Dash was here last meeting.
Right, that's correct.
And Mr. Epps actually pointed out something in favor of the town regarding the rate at the last meeting as well, which I commend you for, Mr. Epps.
I apologize if I had used a little bit of showmanship at that time when I said that, I was wrong when I said earlier the town was going to save $68,000 when in reality our review and audit and our work with National Bureau of Health, the town was saving $76,388 for the first year of the power purchase agreement.
Thank you. Motion by the chair to have the town administrator sign the purchase agreement with Energy Development Partners?
Second.
Motion by the chair, second by Councilman Sully, is any further discussion? Vote, vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Sow, yes. Mr. Sow, Mr. Zalinski, Mr. Boushein.
Yes.
Madam Clerk, please let the record reflect this council mail is no longer in the building.
To the town council, I want to thank you very much on behalf of the Energy Development Partners and the town for taking this action this way to be very beneficial to the economic well-being of the town, thank you so much.
Mr. Epps, we thank you for the wonderful project you brought to our community, and I guess it's going to be very valuable, very valuable for our future.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, I have an F, discussion by council voter, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, discussion by council voter on their action on removal of nonprofit charitable donation bins from private property at the town's request without notice of consensus to Sully, Mr. Zalinski.
Yes, so on November 18th, I received a phone call from the property owner on 15 Railroad Street stating that someone had removed the Salvation Army donation bins from his property. He advised that he was going to contact the North Smithfield Police Department, and he had no discussion as to why they're being removed. He did contact the North Smithfield Police Department, they did arrive on site, I also met the property owner on site, and I don't know if the report was stated, I believe there was not a report taken, as the neighbors had stated the Salvation Army had picked it up. That brings us to Mr. Vowles, Mr. Vowles had submitted an APRA request on Mr. Molly's behalf regarding complaints about his property. That APRA request, I do have a copy of, showed that there was no complaints against Mr. Molly's property, as stated by our building official and all members of his staff, was also sent to the administrator. Mr. Molly, are you in the audience tonight?
Yes, sir.
Can you come to the podium, please? Mr. Molly, for the record, I just want to say here, not that you do anything, you and I personally know each other.
Yes, sir, we do.
Thank you. Okay. On that date that I specified, did you contact me regarding your property?
Yes, I did.
Did you also contact the North Smithfield Police Department?
Yes, we did.
Okay, I have a, you know that Mr. Vowles, I don't, I know he's here later, he may have left, do you know that he submitted an APRA request on your behalf?
Yes, I do.
Okay, did you see the results of that APRA request?
Yes, I did.
Okay. In the APRA request, it states that at present time, he is aware of no authority to his office or members of his staff, however administrative Hamilton did request the Salvation Army collection boxes to be removed from the property. The building staff contacted both the property owner and the Salvation Army, and the Salvation Army has removed the collection of samples. Mr. Molly, how were you contacted?
When I went to my property, they were gone.
So the town did not contact you?
No, they did not.
Mr. Johnson, was the town contacted?
No.
Okay, how come in this APRA it says he was contacted?
I'm not aware of that, I didn't write anything on that in my report.
Okay, what violation was Mr. Molly found a violation of regarding the collection bins?
There was no zoning violations, there was just inquiry by a town resident about some large items being dumped off over there, and I contacted the Salvation Army about picking it up.
Why would you not contact the property owner?
I was just trying, actually, we've had trouble contacting him in the prior years with other issues, so I was just trying to get the Salvation Army to pick it up.
Well, because in the APRA request, I also see that he was given a notice of violation about both, Mr. Molly, did you attend those municipal court hearings?
Yes, I did.
Were you able to get your attorney as well?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so we were able to get in contact with him that way, correct?
That was by summons to the court, yes.
Correct, so when we sent the letter to his residence, he was able to be contacted?
Yes, but there was no response from the...
So, again, there was no violation of any ordinance?
No.
Okay, so this is an issue that, in my opinion, the town should not be in the middle of. It also states that the Salvation, that there were no complaints made, as of this APRA request, that was dated from his pod, from his pod to Administrator Hamilton, Finance Director, the Tax Assessor, Building Inspector, the Public Works Director, and the Planner, asking if anyone may have info regarding Mr. Vowles' APRA request. Yet, in my packet tonight, I do have numerous complaints listed. Where these complaints come from?
The first one was an anonymous call to my office, and that's when I contacted the Salvation Army the first time. The second one came from Mrs. Hamilton, that she had received a call about the same concerns, and that's when I contacted the Salvation Army the second time, and they increased their pickups over at the property.
And the third one?
The third one, again, from Mrs. Hamilton, same request that she had, there was more, and they did, Salvation Army did increase their pickups, and the third time he had called, I had called, they said just to call them whenever they needed to get picked up, and I told them at that time, it wouldn't be, shouldn't be up to the town, should be the property owner that called.
And I agree it shouldn't be up to the town, but it shouldn't have been up to the town right from the get-go for you to begin, for the town to begin involved in this issue without the property owner's consent. The property owner had, has the right to maintain his property, he should maintain in accordance with ordinances and the town charter, and you're telling me he is not in violation of anything, yet the town took it on their behalf to not contact Mr. Molly and contact the Salvation Army, which the Salvation Army does state that they lawfully willingly took it by themselves at the request of the town, is what they said. So, my issue with this is, we're skirting a system, Mr. Molly was not in any violations, an APRA request was filed that says there were no complaints, yet I have a statement from you, I have a statement also from the building inspector that states that complaints were forwarded to the Salvation Army, so which is it, is there complaints, no complaints?
Ma'am? Ma'am?
Sure.
When the first APRA was requested, I believe at that time, there were not as many, there seemed to be over a period of time, large items, the big couches and recliners and things like that, so that's illegal dumping, it becomes that, and they even say it on the side of the boxes, don't leave anything on the side of the box that can't be put in the thing, right? So, we're not going to call Mr. Molly to go pick that up, that's not his purview, he's allowing them to have non-his properties. The other thing is with Mr. Molly, he hasn't been around at that location for a long, long time, and...
So you know Mr. Molly's coming and goings out of 15 Railroad Street?
I go by there like five times a day, I see it, sure, sometimes it's...
Yes, I do have a job.
Good, because I can tell you, I can tell you for certain, I can tell you for certain that I do personally know Mr. Molly, and I have personally been on that property with him.
So has that property been maintained for the last six or seven months now? So here's the thing.
Well, how am I not maintaining my property? Because every time I go down there, you have a problem, I get a registered letter that I'm in some kind of violation of residential zoning section, blah, 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 so I just walked away, I got sick of dealing with it.
So there you go, that's right, so you did walk away.
But I still pay my taxes, the grass still gets cut, and you know, it's not abandoned, there is still stuff on that property, there is still personal belongings on that property.
That's your property.
Absolutely, it is.
He stated that he wasn't there.
Point of order.
So, what I'd like to do is finish it by measure, that, you know, it became repetitive in that there were car seats and little small cri, I mean, it was...
Madam Administrator, have you been to the plaza lately, do you see what gets you uncomfortable there? I mean, all over the Valero gas station where they're...
Point of order, Mr. Epps, and please, through, to you and through you, Robert's Rules of Order, if you don't want to do Robert's Rules of Order, you're going to have Thug's Rules of Order, period.
So again, I go by Valero every night on my way home from work, and there's a microwave out there, there are car seats out there, children with car seats, I mean, just take a look around. And do you know how many donation bins are within 1,000 feet of my property? I mean, somehow I can't be charitable either on this.
So, Mr. Sully, if I may, sir, then the last time we had a complaint, it is an illegal dumping, not on the part of the property owner, but on the part of whoever goes to do that during the night. And at that point, we had talked to the Salvation Army several times, they said that they would try to increase the number of contacts because normally they have them so frequently, they were going to increase them for our, you know, for our purposes, because it seems that larger items are being dropped off more repetitively, and just good to the point, so we said, you know, do what you have to do, we told them, and, you know, get in touch with them and see if, take them off the property and see if it's eyesore.
It's an eyesore, I agree, can become an eyesore, kind of like the town's box over at the library.
The one at Public Works, could you even buy that one?
Kind of like the town's box over at the Public Works garage.
Oh, thank you.
Kind of like the one on 146.
Oh, across from Service and its bank?
Yes. Kind of like that one on 146 of Sales Hill Road.
Well, I'm so glad you're telling us, so now we can go, because I haven't been going by them.
Well, the problem is that you drive by Mr. Molly's property every day, and an APRA, an APRA request was submitted, Mr. Molly, please let me talk.
Sorry.
An APRA request was submitted, you state that these were old accusations, 11, 12, 15 is one of the complaints. The APRA request was filed on 12/22, doesn't sound like it'd be hard to find that one, I would assume these are kept in Mr. Molly's file, the complaints?
The actual zoning complaints, yes, anytime he goes to court, yes.
So all these were in Mr. Molly's file?
No.
Why not?
Because if I take a call from a citizen who wishes to remain anonymous, they do not fill out a report.
So, just so we're clear on this, and I still want to make sure, Mr. Molly was never given a notice of violation for anything regarding his bins?
No, because it was, it's the Salvation Army's bins, it's not his bins.
Okay, and Mr. Molly was never given any forward notice that access was going to be granted to his property by the town to a third party?
We'd have it granted, any kind of access.
Well, by initiating the calls, the Salvation Army did, right?
I would disagree with that.
Okay, that's fine, and there is no enforcement that can be had over the placement of these bins, correct?
No.
Okay, so Mr. Molly, would you like to have bins on your property?
Yes, I would.
Please contact someone to put them on your property then.
I will make a phone call tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sully, Mr. President, may I ask a few questions? Sure, go ahead, Councilman Zalinski. To the administrator and to Mr. Johnson, if I look at the date, the first anonymous complaint, July 16th, 2015, regarding several large items outside the Salvation Army bins located at 15 Railroad Street, the call stated that the boxes and the items outside, the call stated that the boxes and the items outside the boxes were an eyesore, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Did you, did you perform a site visit to verify that these were an eyesore?
I did, I did, yes.
Okay, you might want to include that in your minutes from now on.
Okay, absolutely.
Because it's kind of thematic here that you receive either a call from the administrator, or as a building inspector, yeah, you know, we do trust the people we work with, please incorporate that into your next minutes that you actually performed a site visit.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions?
Mr. Sully, you have anything?
Uh, no, I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Point of order, can I ask you this, President?
Yes.
Mr. President, I think it appears to be in the fact, there was a motion made to ask Mrs. Nato to resign, it was voted freedom two, correct?
That is correct. That's correct.
All right, then, we got into other discussions we went into, and then Mr. Zalinski needed to take a five-minute break. Did Mrs. Nato respond in any way to that request? Did she tell you she's going to resign, is what I'm asking you, did she say she's not going to resign?
She did not say that to me, Council.
Oh, what to the, to you, Mr. President?
She didn't say anything whatsoever.
She just got up and left.
Oh, I know, we have no authority, we can ask her what my...
I understand that, I know, I understand.
We don't have the authorities to...
I understand that, you can send yourself up, but you still don't have the authority, but she said nothing, just left the meeting.
She exited, she, we had a recess and...
She left, yeah, okay, that's the question I wanted to ask, can you answer that, if in fact she had made some determination as to her future in the council?
Can we also, can we also ask afterwards the police chief to investigate this?
I understand that, I understand, okay, thank you.
Mr. Allen, do you care to elaborate on your thought, am I reading your mic?
No, I don't know, I mean, I didn't hear it, and I didn't hear what she said, if she was going to resign or not going to resign. I, the press, I'm here, so I'll say this, I think she's going to have a hard time staying on the council, but, and I was on the council, and I argued with everybody here, and I think we went to a level that we've never been to before, and I argue with you, Mr. Zalinski, we never went down there.
Yeah, we, well, listen, we didn't agree, but we respected it, so...
Yeah, that's all, that's all, and I just think that, I don't know, I just think that that block causes so much trouble, thank God, I'm like you, Mr. Boushein, I don't know how to get on the block, and I feel good about that, and we don't do that, maybe you're too old for all, I don't know, but I just think, I'm only, who was it who wrote the poem and said, "Some say when a word is spoken, it dies, I say when a word is spoken, it's grown," and that's very true, that's very true, and I think it was definitely in this, it's amazing how we drug the town to this mess. That's the only reason.
Mr. Allen, if I may elaborate, if a word is spoken or a word is written, it stays forever written, when it goes electronically, it circumvents the world like that, and it's in perpetuity, it does not go away.
I hope that for the rest of the terms that we have on this council league next, nine months or so, we run an uphill climb, if the plane is up, not down.
Next item on the agenda, we'll go back to it, but let me take this, the first four new business.
Do you want to pay bills?
Yeah, we'll pay them right after, let's take care of these, I'm sure it's this, discussion eight under new business number 13, discussion by council voter on their action on the memorandum of understanding between the Braille and Emergency Management Agency and the town's office for emergency supply container.
Are you making a motion to take that aboard?
Yes, yes.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Sully, second by Councilman Zalinski. Madam Clerk, vote please.
Ms. Sow, yes. Mr. Sow, Mr. Zalinski, Mr. Boushein.
Yes, do you have a trace claim, sir?
You have the copy of the inventory by Peter Brancioni, Emergency Management Homeland Security Director, you have a copy of what's in this box that the state is going to deliver to us. There are eight for the state, Northern Island container will be in our parking lot next to the police station, if you look at the inventory, it's not just shelter supplies, but also supplies for people that are physically challenged, the elderly, so if our town, Sargent, Barville, North Smithfield, has to open a shelter, they would have access to all this equipment, which we normally wouldn't have a chance to afford, so it's basically a gift to us, so if there was a situation where we needed it, we have access to it. I spoke into the chief of police about where he located in the area next to the police station, he has no problem with it at all, I believe the subpoena guest was here or was gone. I spoke to him, so he'd have opportunical plowing, he has no problem with it either.
So you need to, need a council vote to have this...
According to the town administrator, who's going to assign the agreement, it had to go through you folks for officially approving it.
May I ask a question? Is it going to go on concrete, so that way we don't get mice and everything else getting in there and ruining any of this stuff?
What I was asked about is, we have a certain port of McCattam at fault.
Okay.
They didn't want it on that because it may sink in, so they're going to put it on blocks next to that area.
Okay, I just want all the stuff to get, the stuff to get ruined, you know?
When the emergency management facility is fixed at the police station E and A, we're going to try to disguise it so it won't bother the neighbors at all also. If, I don't, if you have that, but it's 20 feet long, 10 feet wide, and 8 feet high, and it's painted white with the Red Cross and Emergency Management logo on it, but we'll try to move it later on so that it doesn't detract from the neighborhood, if I can use that phrase.
Is this like a cargo container?
You, right, we call it a Conex.
Okay, all right.
Any other question?
Mr. President, I'm, thank you Colonel for doing this work on behalf of the town, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement to locate a shelter Conex box at the, at the end.
Second by the chair, Councilman Sully, any further discussion, hearing that, Madam Clerk, vote please.
Ms. Sow, yes. Mr. Sow, Mr. Zalinski, Mr. Boushein.
Yes. Okay. Next item was by IMC, the new business number 13, discussion by council voter on their action on the finance town review, voted Mr. Pommel.
Are you making a motion to move that up?
I moved that up on the agenda.
Yeah, can we take, Mr. President, please, it seems that Mr. Pommel is okay, well, either one, it doesn't matter to me.
Yeah, you might want to take...
Yeah, I would prefer that as well, if you don't mind, just to make sure we get to it tonight.
Okay, motion was drawn.
Mr. President, if we could just follow with number 10, about discussion by town council voter on their action on the consent agenda.
You want to prove is it B, C, D, and E, B, C, D rather, all by one motion?
I would like to remove the discussion payment of bills.
Okay.
Okay.
So on the consent agenda, we're going to remove just the payment of bills from I and A. Motion by Councilman Zalinski, second by the chair, any further discussion? Hearing that, Madam Clerk, vote please.
Ms. Sow, yes. Mr. Sow, Mr. Zalinski, Mr. Boushein.
Now, any other items, B, C, and D, town council ministers of November 16th, 2015, communications from town boards and commissions, including the budget agreements of November 23rd, 2015, planning ordinance of November 19th to December 17th, 2015, D, communications, annual control reports for December 2nd, 2015, North Smithfield Municipal Court Report for December 2015, North Smithfield Police Department Monthly Report for December 2015, North Smithfield Fire and Rescue Services Incorporated Monthly Reports for October, November, December 2015, North Smithfield Fire and Rescue Services Incorporated Annual Run Report for 2015. Chair moves to accept these, place them on, place them on file? Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, second, motion by the chair, second by Councilman Sully and Zalinski, Madam Clerk, is there any further discussion? Hearing that, Madam Clerk, vote please.
Ms. Sow, yes. Mr. Sow, Mr. Zalinski, Mr. Boushein.
Yes.
That motion was to, I sent items...
Absent of A, yes, that's correct.
Council's out the fur, if anybody has any, I wanted to spell on page 14, if anybody's got it. Do you want to take a sequence of pages, Councilman Sully?
Yeah, mine's further back, I think mine's six.
Do you want to take a page by page?
Yeah.
Jason, quick answers on these, on page four of 14. DMY limited liability, police equipment $62, $150, what is it?
Well, a quick explanation is, this is a grant purchased by the police department, the funding comes from a burn grant. In the past, not every purchase has gone through the council document, items that go for special revenue funds were never presented in this bill payment. As of now, everything that's paid is in here, so if you notice to the left, it is 1-016.
Okay.
That is the fund, which is the Governor's Justice Police Grant Fund, that is where the charge is going, to be funded with this grant that they received.
Okay, so in a sense, it's, money's just going to come from the grant, it's not an expenditure from the town?
We pay it, grant reimburses us in that side fund.
Thank you.
On page five of 14, right down at the bottom, Joseph, I'm probably going to say this name incorrectly, is it? Puffer.
Puffer.
Okay. What is this reimbursement for, $325?
Same scenario, in the past, the food pantry costs, we are agents for the food pantry, where they give us their revenues and we pay their expenses, so all we really do is house the bank account, so we're their agent, this is a reimbursement for supplies submitted by Mr. Puffer, coming from the Fund 35, which is the food pantry fund, so they receive donations and they purchase food, certain purchases are done by the puffers who manage the shelter, and they reimburse their, they reimburse their invoices or their receipts to the fund, it's all proved out by finance, so what's, is there a further question on that?
No, I just, never seen this.
Yeah, you've never seen that, because in the past, these side fund runs have never gone through a check run for the council of the city, so now everything that goes through is going to be on these. So it's, I, I guess how it was explained to me was, because that grant isn't necessarily your purview, that's why it wasn't here. But for me, any payment should be on the list of payments.
Appreciate you doing that, though.
Jason, one just quick question on that page. Heart Smart Tech Incorporated, where is that defibrillator going?
Heart Smart? I believe that one is a police purchase for on-site at Bushy School. The thirteen sixty-five.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Your clarification. May I continue? Just go ahead to Councilman.
Thanks. Uh, page six of fourteen, Jason. Material sand and stone, this is expenditure of two thousand four hundred and sixty-six thousand nine cents. At the top, it says recycled gravel for Rankin. Now, is that Rankin path?
Yes.
Do all those other expenses fall under improvements or corrections to the roadway over there?
Um, the first line item, yes, that three hundred and forty dollars.
And the concrete blocks?
All of the other items are in relation to the soft shed.
That's why.
Gravel blocks. Yeah, correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
Nine of fourteen. Sorry, I'm.
Yep.
Uh, Nixon Peabody, okay?
Yes.
Six hundred and twenty-eight. Page eight of fourteen, so services rendered.
These are outside legal services for Nixon Peabody, who I believe is covering some legal cases for us. I might want to refer that to the solicitor for his specific point of what it is.
I'm not, I'm not familiar with which case this is.
I mean, I could pull the history of what it is, but every invoice that we pay legal for extraordinary does get approved by the solicitor, so. I can definitely pull it for you if you'd like an email.
So, if I may, do you want to follow, Council? So this is at the regular rate of a hundred and fifty dollars per hour?
Not this one, this, this Nixon Peabody is a holdover. They're finishing up a case that they started before I was retained.
Are you familiar with it, solicitor?
You know what, I, I'm.
Can we, is this something we can defer? Or like pay it in good faith and?
Pay it in good faith, if you don't mind, Mr. Vice President. And I'm happy to provide you with something.
Yes. I, I know our legal letter response from the solicitor does have reference to this, and we did receive one from Nixon Peabody as well.
What I did before the, for the audit, for the audit, is required that every single case that's pending that has any liability to the town at certain amounts has to be provided. A letter went to Nixon Peabody and they responded about this case.
So I can provide that.
I just got that blurred.
No, it's, it's, I don't, I'm all right.
I'm sorry, I don't remember off the top of my head, but there were a handful.
I'm good with that one.
Okay.
Are you good with, are you going to nine?
I was going to go page nine fourteen, unless I don't want to step down. Down at the bottom, Jason, Pamela Scher, reimbursement mileage, is this a town employee? Who, who's Pamela Scher?
She works for the substance abuse. And the substance abuse, she travels and gets reimbursed for mileage for her travel to seminars from the grant itself. It's funded by the grant, the substance abuse grant. So there's no town cost. Again, if you look, if you want to notice to the left column, the number one means it's an expense. The three digits after that is what fund is paying for it.
Sure.
So anything that's oh oh one is general. If it says oh one seven, it's a substance abuse grant cost funded by the grant.
Okay, you have coding, you work with it every day.
Yeah. If it says oh oh one, it's under the purview of your budget. If it says another thing, it might not be, I guess is what the simple answer is.
And zero one seven means a grant?
Abuse grant, yeah.
Thank you.
Each numbering system.
I'll try to remember that. You know, surely we'll be asking these questions.
I just figure if it's not oh oh one, it's paid for by a different source of money, if that's an easier way to look at it.
Okay.
So.
On nine of fourteen.
Yep.
Eight of police vehicles?
Yes.
Are these new or old?
These are new to uniform the fleet.
Okay.
That's stealthy gray color, right? So you refer to it like stealthy gray. I'm, I'm, I'm good.
You good, Roll Call?
Well, yeah, yeah, I think I'm good.
I only have one more on the packet.
Sure.
Uh, fourteen of fourteen, payment of three hundred and ten dollars to Councilman Zelinski.
Yes.
I was with him when he submitted those receipts.
Yes.
Uh, it says Town Council Maps, I was actually planning maps for Rockland. If you just made, you can make that correction.
It was coded to that spot in the GL, the description that was written just does not reflect.
Okay, I just want this.
So you'll change that, thank you for picking this up.
Yeah, it's just the description, the actual account that's charged was the right one. The description that was put to it is wrong.
So you're correct, that's off, uh, Town, Town Planning Department, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
I just want, Jason, on the fourteen.
Sure.
Was it, One Socket Water?
Um, yes.
Where, where is, where is this?
We purchase our water from One Socket. I'm not sure what building this is in relation to.
Okay.
But some buildings, town buildings are, One Socket supplies its water. I'm not sure what specific building it is, if I?
Yeah, because I'm only looking at a small, you know, I know it's two hundred and fifty-five dollars and eleven cents.
Well, if you'd like to flip two pages to One Socket Water on page one of one of the water department. That is the quarterly payment that we purchase for the water that's supplied to the residents of the system we maintain. So there's kind of two things going on. Water we buy that we give out, and then water we buy just for our building. So.
Anyway, thank you.
Yep.
Is there any further, other further questions?
Madam Administrator, do you, you reviewed these and you approved these bills?
Yes.
Okay, and because, okay. Uh, because the solicitor, excuse me, not solicitor, the administrator and the finance director approved these, reviewed these bills, payment of bills, I'd make a motion to approve total payment December of two million nine hundred and three thousand one hundred and ninety-one dollars and forty-six cents.
A second.
Motion by Councilman Zelinski, second by Councilman Soli, any further questions? So I'm sorry, Jason?
My question's after, I'm sorry.
Okay. Madam Clerk, roll call, roll call, please.
Salz, yes, Mr. Soli, Mr. Zelinski, Mr. Busher.
Yes.
Mr. President, to extend the meeting.
Motion by the Chair to extend the meeting. Half an hour?
Yeah, I'll, I'll second. If you can have an idea of what we're going to cover, so. Before you call the roll, can we look at what needs to be done so that we cover it in half hour?
We can finish up on, if you want, we can finish up on our business very quickly and finish the.
We can probably finish each other.
We can probably finish the agenda.
I will make my items fast.
Okay, let's, let's take a vote instead.
A second.
Okay, was, was, was motion by, was motion by Councilman Zelinski, second by Councilman Soli, and was a roll call, roll call, Madam Clerk?
Salz, yes, Mr. Soli, Mr. Zelinski, Mr. Busher.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Go ahead, Jason.
Would providing the Nixon Peabody legal letter response be good enough for that? To, to explain to you what case it is or what information?
Are you comfortable with it, Jason?
It's, it's not a private document to me.
I think if you're uncomfortable.
I can send out the, the request, that shouldn't be an issue. Oh, you mean if I'm comfortable paying it? Yes, are you?
Yeah.
Okay. I thought you meant responding to an explanation. Okay.
Okay, that's, that's, I guess the, next one is, uh. Yeah, old business papers, discussion for other action on P E C. Any case for bonds, roads, municipal buildings, schools?
That was necessary.
Absent Mrs. NATO, we can continue this?
We'll continue that till, till our next meeting, Madam Clerk. Item C, discussion by Council Board of Action on Intrig, Intriguristional Waste Water Agreement with Mrs. Hamilton.
I just want to go on record as saying that I think we should be signing the agreement. And then if we need to dispute the host fee at any point, we could enter into litigation if that is your, if your purview. But I want to go on record saying that I think at this juncture, given that November is coming quickly and, you know, we're not getting any closer to any agreement. The other issue I wanted to let you know is, the town of Barrowville has responded to speak to any number of people from this town, so.
You want to be more specific, any number of people from this town?
That's what they said, any number of people, whoever you would want to come along with you to speak about possibility of, at some point, becoming partners in a sewer waste water plant.
And who were those individuals in Barrowville that you had this conversation with?
That was an email that I received from the Secretary of the Council President saying that our Council President had reached out, and that was a result of that, that meeting. And whomever would like to attend is welcome, please just let them know in advance.
I also reached out to the Sewer Commission of Barrowville, who's a bill, who, who, William Angus. And he, he's a numbers guy like I am, and he said, whoever you want to bring, our Sewer Department, Sewer Department gentleman or anybody from the Sewer Commission, town administrators welcome, council members are welcome. We never die, have the dialogue with them. So I look very, very happy about this information.
Okay.
Good, Councilman Soli.
If we, if more than two, Mrs. Solicitor, one or two show up, we do have to file a meeting, correct?
Yes, if you're going to have a meeting with them, that what you should be doing, you should be listing, be scheduling the meeting.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Just want to call, if more, if less than two show up.
I believe it is an open invitation.
Okay.
So with that in mind, I think it'd be, I think we'd be, who best to duly noted, right?
Discuss it.
Right.
I don't think we should discuss it any further because of legal implications.
All right, well, okay. Best to, best to pleasure the board. We'll continue on.
Mr. President, if I may, to go back to the approval of bills, the invoices. We seem to fall off, there should be a process here, if I may suggest, my fellow councils. We signed the front page and we initially have the page moving forward to all of it. Okay, it's just something we should be doing as a matter of protocol. Thank you.
Uh, was it, item D, discussion of other action on appointments to boards and commission? Are there, are there any appointees? On this particular one, I noticed zoning board is a second alternative to the expires twelve one sixteen.
That's an error.
That's an error, okay. I know there's attorney who is interested.
Patrick Dowling.
Yeah, Patrick Dowling, yeah.
Yeah, does anybody know Patrick Dowling?
He's an attorney, and he comes into my office, he comes, he is an attorney. Grew up in town, he probably knew his father, Patrick Dowling was a baseball coach, softball coach for the high school.
I don't know his background.
What is this, is what?
Okay, are there any appointees on the boards and commissions, town administrator, that you're aware of?
He would be interested in the redevelopment if you wanted to put one there.
Mr. Dowling, you checked off on this form that zoning board of review.
He did, but then I told him that the zoning board had actually been appointed. So I asked him if he had any interest in the redevelopment agency, he said he would. If he wanted to.
I'll make a motion to.
Do you need somebody?
Give me the five-year term.
You need somebody, do you know, Mr., you're on redevelopment yet?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, what, what?
Economic development.
Okay, sorry.
Planning work.
Okay, yeah, planning, yeah. Do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Dowling to the redevelopment agency. One five-year term that expires, we get the small number, twelve one seventeen, I know. Second.
Motion by Councilman Soli, second by Councilman Zelinski, to give Patrick Dowling a five-year term on the redevelopment agency board. Is there any further discussion? Hearing on Madam Clerk, roll call, roll call, please.
Salz, yes, Mr. Soli, Mr. Zelinski, Mr. Busher.
Yes. Under new business, discussion by Council Board of Action on a work bid of, regarding high school student desk, Mr. Pommel.
Yes, Honorable President and members of the council, I have included in the packet, or your packet, the five bids received. And the first question I had after getting this in was, is this part of the discussion on maintenance of effort? And because this is a fixed asset, it is not considerable for maintenance of effort. And as such, in our budget, we allotted them fourteen thousand three thirty-four to purchase desks this year. Of the bids that came in, the best bid is W B Mason. I did copy the packet for you, for all the responses, for you to see that, and that is the best price. The recommendation of the superintendent is to go with W B Mason. It meets all the specs of the desks that they currently have and what they're moving to. So I concur with his recommendation that, being that this purchase is not against maintenance of effort, the purchase from W B Mason is the best price. So that would be the best situation for us to go to. Questions?
Mr. President, due to the comments of the town finance director, also the memo from the school superintendent, and also to reiterate that this does not apply to the maintenance of effort, I would make a motion to approve the purchase of desks from W B Mason in the amount of fourteen thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars.
Yes, sir. So your answer is? It's three oh eight.
Fourteen thousand, three oh eight?
Sorry.
Sorry, on the front sheet, it says fourteen three three four.
It's, it's the, the cost above that.
Oh.
And then it's, it says the cost is within budget is basically what that is. It's just how the, the school.
Let me retract, okay, so I'll make the motion, basically, as I said previous, for fourteen thousand three hundred and eight dollars.
School second.
Okay, motion by Councilman Soli, second by the Chair. Is there any further discussion? Hearing on Madam Clerk, roll call, roll call, please.
Salz, yes, Mr. Soli, Mr. Zelinski, Mr. Busher.
Yes. Item C, under new business, discussion by Council Board of Action on Finance, to Pommel, are you awarded, Mr. Pommel?
I know I provided copies, but I'm going to provide the actual bound versions for ease of readability. If that helps, because I'm sure that P E F was not fun. I know, because I wasn't too excited. It's not me, one seventeen. So now, the reason for this item on the agenda is there's a couple of major changes or major shifts to this report from last year to this year, and I wanted to highlight them before the auditors come in and allow a chance for the council to ask you any questions in regards to, I guess, anything they have about the report. Obviously, when the auditors come in, in the month of February, the requests for questions, answers will go through with their point of view. I wanted to give finance's point of view of a recap of where we are, basically. So I will start briefly, make this as fast as possible, on page seventy-eight. On page seventy-eight is the budget to actual result of the community. And I remember about September thirtieth, it was a responsibility of mine to provide a preliminary year-end expectation of fund balance, an unaudited version of where I expected to be. And at that point in time, I mentioned it was about three hundred and fifty thousand, and the budget result is dead on for three hundred and fifty thousand. What this means is, what we've expected to spend, we've, we're in surplus of three hundred and fifty thousand versus our expectations. Now, the reason I started on this page is, there's another number for actual surplus, which is six hundred and thirty-five thousand, which is on page seventeen. I really want to explain the difference, because somebody could argue the town resulted in six thirty-five, or somebody could argue they resulted in three fifty, it's just a, you know, perspective. So the difference between the two would be earmarked but unspent funds. So I'll give you an example. On the budget basis, the money that's set aside for O P E B is called an expense for post-employment benefits. In reality, all we're doing is moving the money from one account to another. So actual basis, that's not an expense, it's a reservation. So there's a difference between, did we actually spend the money, or did we earmark it for something? Reserve it, that's the concept here. So another example would be roads, unexpended road purchase expenditures. The balance of that account is carried over to next year to be used for road repairs. So in the budget, it's spent, but in reality, it's just set aside. So in the budget, it's spent, but in reality, it's just set aside to be spent next year. That's the difference between the budget and the actual. So any questions about that? I mean, there's other reasons why the difference is between the two is about three hundred thousand. I can quickly off my head, post-employment benefits, reserve for revaluation, the fund balance restoration. For budget-wise, we spent sixty thousand. Reality, all we did was set an extra expense to force us to have a surplus of sixty thousand. So it's a, at one end, it's we, and we spent it, and the other end, we reserved it. So that's the logic why there's a difference there. There are other reasons, unexpended road purch, you know, items. I mean, I'd have to go through the detail, which is in the report, to explain every other reason.
Just like I mentioned to you earlier, was about the Chromebooks.
Yeah.
Because once we get the letter from the school about that, we go to the.
The M O A. Yeah, well, in this circumstance, it would be, if we earmarked them to purchase the Chromebooks, on the budget, it would be spent. If we didn't pay the money until the future year, in actual, it wouldn't. So actual would be higher, because we appropriated it but didn't actually spend it. So on a budget basis, it's like a cash-in, cash-out, cash flow picture. Actuality is, well, if that didn't have, if that purchase didn't happen until the following year, in the budget, it was spent, but in reality, it wasn't physically spent until next year. That's what the difference is. I know it's confusing. It's accounting jargon is really what this is. What I'm trying to do is make you feel comfortable that there's a reason why one's more than the other, and that reason is the things that we build into our budgets, such as reserves. I just, another quick example. If we set aside twenty-five thousand for post-employment benefit, what I call O P E V funding, and we actually sent it to a trust, it would be an expense in both sides. But because we don't actually, we only budget it, we don't send the money anywhere, because there's no trust set up. When we get to policies, my next item, we'll get to that. It's, it's just the timing of when it actually gets spent. Currently, we're setting aside money for post-employment benefit funding that never gets sent to a trust to administer those benefits and pay them out. So we're reserving money that's never going anywhere to be used for that purpose until we set up a trust, but that will be a policy in my next item. So there are many items between the two. Any questions you have, specific further explanation, anytime, reach out to me and I can explain it. So in order to try to keep this moving, did I beat that up enough? Sorry. The other big, big change to this report, I'm going to call attention to page forty-six. Now, Perk Gatsby sixty-eight, which is pension reporting responsibilities, the town had to add every pension liability, whether it's teachers, whether it's town municipal, whether it's police, to our balance sheet. Now, historically, we only added what the actuary told us we need to require to contribute that year per accounting rules. That's what got added. Now, it's the whole wall of wax of what you know, if we were, if we severed all operations, what would you owe? Well, you'd owe seventeen million to the pension system. Now, that's seventeen millions on our books. In light of that, we are one of the few communities that still has a bottom, a bottom-line positive net position. Now, I, I just looked around at a couple of local communities, and I hate to point a finger to our neighbors to the south, because they're actually in pretty good financial shape. The town of Smithfield has a negative eighteen million net position because of adding this liability. We're still at a net positive nine million. So if you look at that in the context of all the other communities, you know, if everybody else is negative and we're positive, we're in pretty good shape. And another factor about this pension funding that we just added to our books, it's actuarially determined three years in advance. So if the state wants to make us kick in more to cover that seventeen million, we know, because it's three years from now, was when that rate contribution changes. So it's, you know, it's very controllable by us between now and then to make sure the budget has enough money to fund an increase. Now, the state manages the plan, so I can't tell you exactly what they do, because they say contribute X, and I say, here's X. I do whatever they tell me to. We don't administer anything. So if they decide to increase some contributions to catch up on that liability, that's their purview. I will let you know, though, the town municipal has a positive one point five million in the pension fund. So town municipal is in, is in amazing shape. The police department is about minus two point five million. But to look at the town alone, not the school, just the town, to have only a net liability of one million in pension, I mean, I'd like to benchmark, benchmark us against the rest of the state, because we're probably in one of the best shapes ever. The reason for that, all state-administered plans, they tell us pay X, we pay X. There's nothing managed in-house that we didn't contribute to or didn't plan for or, you know what I mean? Everything is a forced cost to us for pension. None of it's on our controllable cost. That's why we're going to get back to the O P E V, because that's a controllable cost on us, but I'll talk about that a little further when we get to the policy. So the two major changes here this year, we added seventeen million liability to the books that was never there, and we're still in a positive shape. And the net result, budget basis, of the town and school combined, just those two, because if you look at special revenue funds and capital projects, they don't really reflect the real activity. Because if I took out a five hundred thousand dollar loan for vehicles last year and I bought them this year, well, last year I have a five hundred revenue, this year I have five hundred expense. So obviously, it's a timing issue as to why that, those funds change a lot. But when you look at just the town and school, we added one point two million to the bottom-line fund balance of this community this year. Now, if we go back one year, it was actually a net zero was added to the fund balance. So to go from zero to one point two million, that's, that's a large step in a one-year period for finance to turn it around that way. Now, what I wanted to do is, I wanted to give some credit to that. And it starts with David Dolez, the tax assessor. What he has done for the stability of our tax base here, I'll just give you a number for this year. We're projecting to have the same amount of supplemental bills as abatements this year, and that's under sixty thousand. So now, historically, from, as we remember Jim Lombardi's report, if everybody does, if not, it's on her website and reread it, there was a three-year period where we conceivably lost a billion, according to Jim. Well, to go one year after his report and be in a spot where we have a net zero of abatements, that's an unbelievable turnaround. And it's solely credit of Dave Dolez. So that's number one, first and foremost, without the stable tax base, controlling costs is useless, because you don't know what you're charging people, so you don't really know what your costs are to control. So starting there, the second piece of credit that I'd like to give, the budget committee. The conservative approach that they took, and how, it's funny, because my staff seems to think you can't cut an electric bill, because an electric bill's not going to decrease. But that's the logic that was taken in some angles, and it really did control costs. Being unbelievably conservative on revenues and expenditures and making sure everything, you know what I mean, is justified through that budget process, that's another big chunk of this. Without their oversight to have that, I guess, budget conservative control approach, it could have been a free-for-all, but it wasn't, because their foresight to be conservative on revenues and volatile things, like budget fairly for health insurance, even if it decreases, you know, things of that nature, that's another reason that we're in a decent shape right now. And now, the third one, I'd say, is a split between finance now and the department heads. Finance, I'll just be honest, that every single policy, internal policy to finance has been changed. The way we process receipts, disbursements, payroll, everything we do is a new process to make sure it's done right now, because in the past, it wasn't always done. So now, the information that we provide is reliable, because it's based off of controlled information rather than free-for-all. We look at it that way. But that's only part of it. Without department heads out there actually looking out for the bottom line of this community, we could have wasted it all the way this year and been in a shape of negative or zero as well. But the department heads, they really care about the bottom-line dollar going out. They want to make sure that this town gets the best bang for its buck. So they all need to be commended with what they've done with, obviously, the guidance of the budget committee. And, you know what I mean, the help of David to stabilize the revenue source that supports all of this. So I, I believe those are the only important things I wanted to, excuse me, cover. The last thing I wanted to go over is in the back of the report, which is the comments section. And that starts on page one oh four. So we had three comments this year. Comment one is that we should be reconciling our tax revenues and receivables. And the reason this comment's here is because until I got here, this process wasn't being done. So within the year under audit, the monthly reconciliation didn't happen until I showed up. As of June thirtieth, it was done, and as of every month since, it's a month-end adjustment that finance performs. So if receivables go from two dollars to two million, we're going to question, why did it change so much? Because we actually book a monthly entry to see that activity. In the past, it was never booked. So when receivables, tax, what we build versus what we can collect, changed from one million at the beginning of the year to two million at the end, when it's always been one million, one million, one million, two million, nobody actually saw that there was a problem in tax, because nobody was posting this entry. So finance couldn't really have the oversight.